Okay, just so you know, it's June twenty first. You've got June twenty second as your. Oh yeah, but uh. It's like supposed to be somewhere else.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah.
Great. Um, I'd like to call the June twenty first twenty seventeen zoning board of appeals meeting to order at seven thirty two P M. Uh, my name is Casey Bailey, I'm the chair of the zoning board. Uh, to my left is Kathy Franzen, to my right Jason Norman and Dan McDonald are our members. Um, we we did have a fifth member get appointed since our last meeting, but um I've just received an email that he's withdrawn from the board, so we are unfortunately still at four members tonight. Uh, and we do have a pretty full agenda, uh, just so you know, we will take the agenda out of order to try to dispose of uh those sort of more quick applications first, uh, so that so that we can get people kinda in and out. Um, the way this process works is I'll read the legal notice for the public hearing. We'd ask the applicant to come forward and and sit and present your application. Uh, towards may have some questions at that point, um, just to to kind of facilitate the discussion. We then ask that anybody in favor of the uh application speak. Uh, when you come up to speak, we request you state your name and address for the record, um, and and give us a short uh comment comment period um with whether you support or oppose the application. Um, at that time, the board will uh probably ask a lot more questions of the applicant, uh, and once we're satisfied that we have all the information, we'll close the public hearing and deliberate on each application. Um, with that, um, I think we'll first hear application. Um, well, actually, I'm gonna I'm gonna pull agenda item three first, uh, which is application two thousand seventeen dash six made by Elizabeth Rose. If yeah, come on up. Um, as you may know, I need to recuse myself on this matter because I'm gonna butter.
I didn't know we were so close to each other.
Um, I I live on Spring Street, it's just around the corner. So, um, unfortunately, that leaves only three members sitting on that um matter. Because I'm gonna recuse myself, I I well, I I would nominate um.
You don't have to recuse yourself.
Yes, thanks Charlie, I I do, but um I would nominate Dan McDonald to serve as chair for this matter. And I guess I'd look for a second for that motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you in favor, Dan?
I'll abstain, I'm all for myself, you got it without it, right?
I think so. Here, so you abstained? So I I I think I need to leave it to you, Dan, to decide what to do, whether you wanna open the hearing or.
I don't believe we have a quorum with three members. We don't. So procedurally, we can't, um, so uh you know, what I'd like, you know, like to suggest, I mean, I apologize that this short notice, which is unfortunately, things happen that way, um, and uh, we're a volunteer board, so we do the best, we showed up, I was hoping to provide public service, but uh, under the rules, we can't, so uh um, we can continue it to the next monthly meeting. Um, what I would like to do is, uh, you know, as a courtesy, if possible, I mean, we'd have to, um I thought about maybe having a another special meeting in the interim, if that would quicken the timeline on that, but procedurally, you need to repost. And of course, that would be, uh, uh, it would require the board of selectmen to get a quick uh, a quick appointment, so the stars would have to align to get you in here in two weeks to, you know, short that, otherwise, we're looking at a jeez, we're in June, so then we got the fourth of July week, so I don't even know, we can talk about scheduling though. When when will we? We were July nineteenth? Can you wait till July nineteenth and we'll proceed at that time? I mean, I just uh yeah, I just, you know. Well, I'm not gonna say you have to, I mean, you might have to, but I mean, if you have uh, if you have knowledge on how we could proceed uh in a in a better fashion, I'm listening. Cause I'm new to this job as of right now.
What I was saying is if we can't find, if we don't get another appointment by then, we have an exception set for.
Well, I mean, there's a rule of necessity, I don't know, she doesn't, uh, you know.
I don't know if she's in favor or against.
Yeah, that would, yeah. Why don't why don't we wait and see what happens? I I'll I'll get a hold of the board of selectmen and urge them, I mean, we uh you know, in the past, I mean, uh, Mike Wood has sat in, I mean, we we could get a pinch at it. Okay, so I'm gonna think positively that we're gonna get a a full quorum here. And I'd like to see five members, cause with the four, you need unanimous with the, I mean, with the four, you need unanimous with five, it could be a a majority of the board, so I think.
It benefits me in that respect.
Okay. Yeah, I wanna be fair, you know? Cause if we don't have a full board, I believe the rules allow for you to continue until we do, so I mean, that just kicks the can, kicks the can.
Right, so I'm I'm gonna be hopeful that by the nineteenth we'll have a board.
We'll have a board, a full board. Alright.
I understand.
Alright. Okay. Yeah, have a chat with them. Alright, so I need to close? Alright, strike that, Dan, sorry about that, I don't wanna create any more conflicts, but there's four other members of the board of selectmen in. A motion to close that, and I guess reopen with the uh, the chairman back. Thank you for.
It's a call for a vote, Dan.
Uh, put that to a vote.
Aye.
Did you say all in fa- all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, um, with that, we're gonna move on to uh, application twenty seventeen dash eight. Let me read the notice. The notice of hearing dated May thirtieth, twenty seventeen, please take notice, application twenty seventeen dash eight made by Robert Porter for a special permit to operate a business named Merrimack Yarn at nine oh eight Salem Street, Unit Two, Assessor's Lot forty eight, Lot one B, according to all applicable applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including sections one oh seven point seven. Uh, a hearing on this petition will be given in the main meeting room of Town Hall, one oh one eighty three Main Street, Groveland, Mass, on Wednesday, June twenty first, twenty seventeen, at seven thirty P M. At which time, you may appear either in person or by agent or by attorney and present any reasons which you may have for granting or denying this visit petition. Robert Porter? Hello.
Hello.
And just so the board is aware, um, I spoke with Mr. Porter on Monday, I believe it is. Just to give a little bit of background to the public, um, a new zoning bylaw uh was adopted at town meeting this year on uh April twenty fourth. That bylaw goes becomes effective as of the vote of town meeting. So, uh, the the applicable section that was listed in the the notice of section one oh seven point seven requiring a special permit for this type of use, um, is actually no longer in force. Under our new zoning bylaws, uh, we have a table of uses that lists, you know, a variety of uses as allowed or requiring special permit in various zoning districts. My read of table four point five, um, and the application as a retail use would suggest that you don't need a special permit anymore, um, and that that this is an allowed use as of right. Um, I had asked Mr. Porter to to kinda have a conversation with Sam Jocelyn, our building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, to try to confirm that, make sure you you're on the same page. So that's where we are going forward, so. Mr. Porter, if you wanna tell us a little bit about the project and kinda help us um understand what conversations you might have had with Sam in the last couple days.
We uh, we opened up a knitting yarn store in Gloucester called Covered Yarn, uh, back in two thousand eight. And with the closure of several shops in this area, um, we thought it would be a good idea to open up a new shop uh, in the Merrimack River Valley, and we found a location in Groveland, and uh, here we are. We weren't aware of the zoning process, uh, or of the change of the zoning process until I received a phone call the other day. So we're just trying to to be a good neighbor and make sure we're doing everything by the book. We just wanna open up a retail knitting yarn store. We'll have some classes there. But it it is pretty much right what it sounds like, a knitting yarn.
Okay.
So we're selling retail knitting yarn.
I did have a quick question. How many square feet are you gonna?
Uh, the uh, facility is, the the unit they're wearing is approximately thirteen hundred and fifty square feet.
Thank you.
And the hours were, you had listed were seven A M. to eleven P M.?
Yes, when when I was going through the application process, I received uh varying answers to almost all of my questions, and they said, just put down something that exceeds what you would be open, so that you don't have to go in front of the zoning board if you change your hours. Our plan is actually less hours than what's listed, so we did just that.
Okay. Uh, one question, are you are you in fact planning to be open on Sunday?
We were, is there a problem with being open on Sunday?
No, but I'm now just looking at um, looking at our bylaw. And we do have normal business hours, and that's in that are as of right, which are in the industrial district, Monday to Saturday.
Okay.
So good thing, good thing we're here.
Well, that's that's why I'm here, because we wanted to make sure that we
Great.
we did everything the right way the first time.
Yep, perfect. So, um, so we would be looking for Sunday through Saturday, seven A M. to eleven P M. Which I'm noting requires a special permit.
Okay.
Uh, and the sign that you were looking to put up was sixty, so five feet by two feet?
Uh, yes, there's uh, currently a sign of in the plaza.
Okay.
Uh, this is everybody, so everybody knows where the plaza is, it's with the uh, the gas station, Nicole's uh convenience. And we will be replacing the uh dance sign that's at the top of the pillar with the sign that just says yarn.
Okay, so it's on the, on the podium?
It's replacing an existing sign, yep.
Um, are you gonna put one right over the entrance too?
Uh, I believe so.
Yeah.
Do we need a permit for that as well, or?
Well, it all kind of adds up, I guess, so yeah, let's look.
Would it be replacing what's there?
Yes.
With the size, same size?
Yes. Smaller probably, actually. There's there's two signs that were there from the party store that was there previously.
Provided it will be less than twelve square feet, which would be three by four.
Okay.
Would be okay.
Then that's what it will be.
Um, is there anything else about the story that we haven't touched on that you would be doing?
Uh, from the application process, I would, the only things that could stand out to me would be any hazardous materials we have would be standard household cleaning agents. I I don't foresee anything atypical. It's a rather innocuous business.
Are there any questions by anybody on the board?
I had a question for you. Why why isn't this just a permit by right situation? What what takes it?
I think the use is, um, what I've just in looking at the hours, um, he will need a special permit in order to open on Sundays.
So he wants to deviate from that?
Right.
Okay. You want it Sunday hours?
Ideally, yes.
Okay, alright.
So that's that's the only, you know.
And within that strip there, are the businesses open? Do you, are you familiar with the uh, budding uh, uh, businesses there, and what what's your knowledge of that, just as?
Uh, we've been in the space painting and things like that in preparation for approval. The convenience store next door, uh, they're very excited that we'll be moving in, they wanna see some some more activity.
Yeah, more foot traffic, more traffic, period, yeah.
Same thing with the liquor store, uh, the uh Grove, Pizza Grove.
Yeah.
The gas station, we've we've been in communication with everybody in the plaza, and really great people, to be honest.
Yeah, in terms of fairness, uh, you know, if they're open a certain amount of hours and I just, you know, do you know how, what the latest hours are for that, uh, the pizza place?
The pizza place, I believe closes up around eight o'clock.
On Sundays, really?
Uh, I believe so. The liquor store is actually the thing that's open the latest, out of everything in the plaza right now.
Okay.
The the convenience store just changed their summer hours over to nine o'clock, they were closing at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, the liquor store is open until ten. The uh.
On a Sunday?
Yeah, cause.
Yeah.
I think any of them was opening in this town till ten o'clock on Sunday.
This place closes at eight on Sunday.
Okay.
My husband used to work, it was like ten to six on Sunday.
Alright. So so what Sunday hours were you, were you requesting?
We were aiming for for ten to five on the application, we put seven to eleven, all all seven days, just so that we're.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, if it's consistent with the other businesses in that strip mall there.
What what did you think was reasonable?
Whatever the the neighbors are, I mean, if they're only open at ten, then we'll make it till.
Is there much need for midnight yarn shopping?
There's none.
I don't.
Once a year, there's a a shop hop sale where all the shops on the North Shore get together. In the Gloucester store, we have hours till ten o'clock.
Yeah, there you go.
It's four days out of the year.
Yeah.
But I wanted to put it on the application to make sure that we don't come into a situation in the future.
Yeah.
The yard is open till midnight, so.
I don't have a problem with that area, I don't think anyone would complain, but we're gonna find out.
Um.
That's how it happens.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak in favor of the application? Anybody wants to speak in opposition?
Controversial business, huh?
So, um, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing. A second. All in favor?
That's fine.
Alright. Uh, any discussion amongst the board?
Three more, I'm sorry, we discussed?
We did it.
The use is allowed as of right, so um, the the main question is the Sunday hours. And I, it's an industrial district, there's no real residential use around there. Other businesses are also open late on Sundays, so I don't see a problem with um allowing hours from seven A M. to eleven P M.
I agree.
Mm-hmm. Um, and I think we would permit, the the use is permitted as of right, so we can't really
And the square footage falls in.
talk about it, um, and the square footage is um small retail. We'll just note the the size of the signs and where they're they'd be located, just so it's clear that you don't need a special permit for those signs.
Okay.
So, um, I'll make a motion to approve the application twenty seventeen dash eight, um, granting a special permit to the applicant to allow the proposed retail use, uh, with the hours of Sunday through Saturday, seven A M. to eleven P M. And with the si- sized signs as noted, uh, in the application and as discussed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming and for kind of stepping through the hoops that we kinda had to go through, we are in a learning process with the new bylaw. And it's nice to meet you and we're welcome to Groveland.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Make plenty of money.
Alright. So next, we're gonna take application twenty seventeen dash seven, um, made by James Ogden, Oak Valley Development LLC. Are you here? Hi, um, so, I'm opening public hearing on uh, application twenty seventeen dash seven made by James Ogden, Oak Valley Development LLC, seven thirty Salem Street, Assessor's Lot thirty nine, Lot one oh six A, who is requesting a finding of fact to raise the existing rec- rectory function hall and construct a two-family dwelling in accordance to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including sections one oh six. Again, to bring the board up to speed, um, Mr. Ogden and I spoke on Mon- on Monday as well, um, just, uh, I had asked him to bring in a full-size site plan to help us kind of better understand what's going on on this site. So, uh, Mr. Ogden, would you like to tell us what you're proposing?
Initially, we had purchased the property from the Catholic Church, and we didn't know exactly what we would be able to do with the existing building. Um, I had a number of conversations with Sam Jocelyn. And he had, his interpretation of the current zoning at the time led him to suggest that the building as is could be converted to a two-family dwelling, or it could be raised and replaced with a two-family dwelling, provided that provided that it does not increase the non-conforming. Through the next few months, in uh, working on re-changing your zoning, I had a follow-up conversation with him, and he had sort of changed his mind a bit, um, and suggested that the best thing, best course of action for us would be to seek a finding from this board that's, uh, two-family use in this existing building would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and at that point, he would be willing to issue a permit.
Okay, um.
So as it is now, we would like to keep the existing structure as it is, make interior modifications, and utilize it as a two-family residence.
Do you have a floor plan for that, or a proposed floor plan?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Okay.
The sub- current floor plan is about two thousand square feet, so each unit would be about a thousand or eleven hundred.
So you would like split it down the middle, do up and down, or would you do first?
Roughly, it would be left and right, there's really no second floor on the building as is.
Yeah, left. Oh yeah, that's right.
So the, the site plan that's on the septic plan that you submitted, is this, is this what would have been proposed if it had been torn down and rebuilt?
Yep. Yeah, um, as far as the septic system goes.
The, well, the the footprint's a little different than what you're showing on here.
Yep, um, so there is a existing footprint shown on that plan as a, as a hashed line.
Okay, is it this?
Yeah. So the the replacement structure fit within the
Within the existing.
existing structure.
And are
But the situation changed a bit, so the, the thinking now is that we're gonna maintain the existing structure and make interior modifications to the.
And are the the setbacks that are shown on here from the existing?
Um, the setbacks on that are to the proposed, I believe. This, um, plan of land shows the existing structure setbacks.
Okay.
So we're we're twelve point four feet off the sideline, fourteen point four in the rear, um, eighteen feet to the rear property line, and we're about eighteen and a half feet off the street.
Okay, but did you say fourteen point four in the rear or eighteen?
On the side, we're twelve point four, and at the rear of the building, we're fourteen point four.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's.
To the rear property line, it's eighteen point one.
I'm sorry, you said the front setback was twelve something?
Front yard setback, as it is now, is eighteen, eighteen point three.
Eighteen.
That's to the main structure of the foundation, not to, is like a covered entryway, that comes out for about ten minutes.
Not to the corner. Okay. Okay. So you're not proposing any exterior modifications to the structure?
Exterior modifications, I believe that we might get done to it is, um, possibly a deck on the rear of it that might be required for emergency ingress.
Would that be like an open deck, just?
Yes.
Um. So you wouldn't be putting a second story on?
Um, so, future owners of the property are here as well.
Okay.
Um, we didn't really have too thorough of a conversation about what could happen.
Okay.
There's no immediate plans that are more of to put a second story on the building.
Okay, do you know what that current height is? Is it less than thirty-five feet, I guess, is my question.
Yes, yes.
They're not, you know.
Sure.
You're, you're not cleaning up, making it move, if they did everything to the space, it would be as if as if it existed. They put a skylight or something like that, they would be out there now.
Okay.
We're not in the outside of the building, we're not giving a chance, outside of the building.
Just.
We may have two trouble sky lights, too.
Just, just so anybody who might be watching us on T V, cause we're super popular, um, the uh, new owners indicated that any second story would be all done within the existing, uh, structure, footprint, and height, um, and that only skylights might be an issue, or might be proposed.
I have a quick question, go for it. Do you also own the lot to the left, which is the old rectory?
So, I perpetually get confused between what.
Because the one on the left was the rectory, and the one on the right was the function hall.
Rectory. Yes.
So you have the function hall, right? Do you also own the other one?
Yep. I I did own the rectory.
You did, okay.
The rectory has a new single family.
Do you wanna explain what, explain what happened?
Um.
And we we discussed this a little bit, but we should put it on there then.
The Catholic Church wanted to sell the entirety of the property, and for lack of a better term, this function hall was sort of the white elephant that nobody wanted. Um, so, what we wanted was the single-family house next door that had land available for a house lot for an additional single-family house. And as things unfolded with with title research and deed research, um, this was actually on its own pre-existing non-conforming lot, that's slightly undersized, slightly undersized when Groveland adopted zoning, and um the attorneys agreed that there was no infectious invalidity, so it could be treated separately. So we we moved forward with getting a family into this structure, there's a new structure being built next door, and we're looking to get this structure used again.
Okay, so there were, there was a question as to whether the lots might have merged, is that, and and it was determined that they had not?
What had happened was the, um, yeah, it was determined that they had not. Uh, sort of like if you, if you owned a single-family house and you bought a lot next door that was non-conforming, it happened to have a store on it, or a gas station, or a church, or anything else, um. They did come into common ownership, but they had separate uses. The separate use thing could be argued that this was used for a religious purpose, and this was used for a religious purpose, but this was certainly used as a essentially a private residence, and this was used as more of a public religious, I think they taught school there, they had flea markets there.
There was a function hall too.
Yeah, there was a stage, so there was a stage.
Well, that is, that leads me to why I asked the question, because the application says rectory slash function hall, so I thought, okay, well, maybe he's talking about both. But there is a distinct difference, so that's why I wanna make sure we had the right place.
I don't. Sure, absolutely. I don't think I, I have a copy of my application here, I don't think I I don't think I refer to it as, maybe I did, I try to avoid the. I don't think I refer to it as, if I did, I try to avoid the term rectory, because I think of a rectory as...
Well, maybe it was in the legal notice, yeah.
As in, building that priests live in, let's just, shall I, understood rectory?
Oh, it was in Sam's letter that I read it, existing rectory slash function hall, sorry. I knew I read it somewhere.
Everybody I've spoken to in this town knows exactly what this building has been used for, except me. And they, everybody knows what to call it, except me.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, do you have a square footage on what the lot is?
The lot, as it was created nineteen forty-five, was, uh, eleven thousand six hundred and ninety square feet.
Okay. Can you assume you're well under the lot coverage?
Yes.
Actually, what, what is, do you know what the square footage of the footprint of the building is?
If this was a perfect square, I believe it would be two thousand square feet. I believe the building is either fifty by forty, or fifty-four by forty.
I think that works.
I'm surprised that the dimensions aren't actually...
I know, that's what I was saying, I, I...
You got your lot area on it, but...
I don't have any of them either. It's a scale, so you can probably figure it out, I didn't know, but...
I think, I think we're probably close enough, but...
Yeah, I'm just marveling at this recorded plan, the scale's actually wrong.
Who's your engineer? Um, the board have any other questions? Um, okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Please come in.
I have a question.
Um, so this gentleman, uh, got his hand up first, and we'll get you next.
Okay.
Uh, Mitchell Croner, Three Cannon.
Can you come up and talk into the microphone, Mitch? It's on, it's on.
Okay. Uh, Mitchell Croner, Three Cannon Hill Road Extension. Uh, just wanted to speak in favor, I'm a real estate attorney in town, and there's a definite shortage of two-family housing. Uh, in fact, I have a client in the neighborhood where this, uh, house is, where this potential house is, who's would like to stay in Groveland, but has been having difficulty finding, uh, rental property. So, I, I think there's a definite, uh, a definite need for this, and therefore in support of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mitch. Miss, if you'd like to, we just need to have it on the microphone, so if you wanna come up and tell us your name and ask a question.
It's Candace May, seven twenty-seven Salem Street. I was just curious where the driveway was going?
Uh, we did have, uh, we got a curb cut from it from the fire department. We're considering two driveways, um, one was gonna be for your part, part of it, one was gonna be a twelve-foot wide driveway to the right of the building,
Mm-hmm.
and then the shape of this is a hundred percent confirmed, um, there's gonna be a fairly wide curb cut to the left of the building. It would accommodate probably four cars.
Cause that's, um, this is like a curve there, and it's gonna be a blind driveway.
This, this driveway in particular does meet, um, sightline requirements.
Oh, okay.
Um, this driveway to the right is actually gonna be adjacent to an existing driveway, and a hundred feet down the road, there is a stop sign. So, it's on...
I'm just saying, cause we walk our dogs, and then we try to cross from that side to our side, and we can't see the cows coming, so it's just, it's around that, you know, to be accurate.
It's a blind yard.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna have trouble.
Um, okay. Thank you. Uh, would, would be, we'd be able to take a look at your curb cut plan?
Sure.
I thought it was on this, but it's not.
Okay. Can you talk a, about the purpose of each, um, each curb cut, each drive?
Uh, assuming this would be, we would be seeking like a left and a right side unit. We did wanna sort of establish some sort of separation in, in parking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it does lend itself to one unit being slightly smaller than the other unit. I think the zoning requirements require, uh, if you have more than one bedroom, you need two parking spaces. The parking spaces to the right would theoretically be stacked, so a twelve-foot wide entry. Um, Bob, the highway superintendent, commissioner, um, was a little concerned that if there wasn't quite enough room
Yeah.
to park in front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sort of a judgment call, I think. Uh, and I think there is ample room to the left of the building to put in a drive and allow you to, to pull in, and then turn to the left and to the right, and stack three parking spaces to the left, three to the right, and then be able to back out, so you're always either pulling straight in or pulling straight out.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either in favor or against the application?
Hi, I'm, uh, Anthony Pirelli, I own seven forty. I'm in favor of it, it's a...
Hang on. What's your last name?
Pirelli, P E R E L L I.
In seven forty, see them?
Yep, I'm a direct voter, so I own like a little behind him too. Um, it's more of a hazard to keep it the way, as a dumpy abandoned building. People can break in, create some more hazards, I think, for everybody, and everyone's own values. If you live next to a dumpy building, people aren't gonna buy your house. So, long-term, I think it would be better for, for essentially the whole neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chek, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You live in the neighborhood, so I'll ask you, uh...
Yeah, I'm a three-family.
What are, what are the other houses surrounded his property in?
Uh, mine's a three.
Are they three?
That, oh, two, and then there are a lot of singles.
Cause I mean, it says here, there's a, uh...
Two, well, a friend who's single.
Across...
Says the, they're, on the certified, a boughters list, there are five multi-families.
I like coloring. So, what I did here was, uh, I outlined the properties that were notified by the certified boughters list in pink here.
Yeah.
Um, the green properties are all multifamily structures.
Okay.
The orange properties are non-residential.
And which one, Joseph?
Uh, this one in blue.
When we say multifamily, do you mean two, or more, three or more?
So, the gr- green property?
The green, yep. This green property here is this gentleman.
And then the other one adjacent to it, you built that, and it's, you built on that, it's a single family and sold that.
The existing single family, and then there's a new one right here.
Well, it's right here.
Uh, right here, orange.
This, this white one here.
This white one, I believe that's a single family.
It's a single.
Yeah, it is.
So, you think this would change the, uh, the, uh, character of the neighborhood at all?
No, I don't think it would have it.
I mean, from that building, what you see is, if you look across the street, you see a gas station, a parking lot. If you look next door, you see a, a very well-maintained three-family.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look to the right, you see a house that's being renovated, and a few doors down, fancy sauce. And further in the backyard is a church parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm not, it's a nice neighborhood, it's just, this is the...
And just in a, Dan, in this district, two families are allowed as a right, um, the application's here because of the, the non-conforming lot.
Okay. I understand, but...
But it is, it's still a question, I just, just so you know.
Whether or not the non-conforming use would, uh, be more detrimental than the, the current use, which is, it's kind of an ab- abandoned building.
Yeah.
So, um...
Like I said, it gives a lot of young people a chance to get into the town too, two-family. Whether it's rented, or if it's a two condos, it gives younger families a chance to get in. Compared to, I mean, Groveland's an expensive town, so it'd be more reasonable for getting people in.
And all the taxes are outrageous, huh?
That does bring up a good point, though. Are you, are you planning on doing apartments or condos? Have you thought of it?
Uh, I believe the plan was to do apartments, two apartments, or a...
Apartment. Somebody said?
Hey, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought, one of you guys was gonna occupy it, or you, potentially?
I see, okay. Thank you.
Um, did you have anything more to say?
No, no.
Um, anyone else who wants to speak in favor?
It's Thomas Angel of seven twenty-nine Salem Street, I'm the single family across the street. Um, A N G E L L. So, I'd like to second, uh, what Anthony was saying, I think the existing structure needs rehab completely. I've been in the neighborhood since twenty-ten, nothing's ever gone on there, it's just falling apart. Uh, my initial concern when I showed up was, uh, that the building was gonna be torn down and rebuilt, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, whatever was rebuilt fit inside the neighborhood, was consistent with the other homes. But if it's just going to be renovated, I think my, that concern has been alleviated. So, I guess one of the questions I have, is there any still, is there still any potential that the existing building could be torn down? Or is it a hundred percent solid, it's just gonna be renovated?
I would defer to the, to the new owners. Um, my, my experience with them is that they, they wanna keep the existing structure.
Yes.
Yeah, and if they were to change their mind down the road, they would be back here.
Okay. So, I think...
Excuse me. Doesn't the application say to raise it?
It does, and he's amending the application, my understanding.
It does. I would... I would say that I'm a hundred percent certain that my application says that, but I think Sam's letter...
Yeah, actually, it's, it's Sam's letter that said that, and so the notice that...
Okay, it's, it's in the public notice, though, I wanted to clarify that, so I mean that...
Yeah, right.
Cause, cause to your point, you know, what's said here is what we make a decision on, so if you wake up down the road and there's something built there that you didn't intend...
Right.
That's not what we want.
Right.
So...
So, we can take care of that as a condition in, in a decision that...
That if it, if the, if the building is raised, I, I suggest, and again, it's up to the board ultimately, but, uh, um, that they would have to come back with those new plans if they were gonna kind of move the building or make it bigger, move it left or right, I mean...
Any changes to the footprint, they'd have to come back, because it would...
They'd have to.
Outside of the...
It'd be an alteration.
The setbacks and...
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Okay.
But if they build it big, you know, obviously within the height limits, I don't think there's any...
Any issue there.
Issue there.
Yeah.
Well, they, they would still need to come back even if, even if it was as an alteration to a non-conforming, more, structure that we need to come back, even if it fell within the, the dimensional requirement. I saw your hand go up, um, did you have anything else to say?
Nope, that was it.
Do you wanna come, if you could come up, um, and, and introduce yourself as well, cause...
Usually, we have a podium set up.
I know we, or a table, but, um... Just to clarify, are you, did, are you a new owner?
I, no, I'm the realtor for the new owners. And I just had a question about, um, when you were talking about coming back, if they're making exterior changes. Is that something that we can, um, if they're gonna do the deck for the second egress, is that something that we can resolve tonight? Or is that something that they have to come back with?
Um, if you can give me, give us like the location and size, I think we can probably deal with it.
Okay.
Um...
Is it really a deck or is it just a walkway access, basically?
It would have to meet setback requirements too.
Well, would it nice to have a little bit more of a deck? It's very pretty back there, actually. Wants to clean up a little bit, so would it nice to be able to use that a little bit as well as a sitting area, not just a walkway? Um, I think some of that is also gonna be within the bounds of more property, I don't think, so...
I might close that.
Would, would the deck meet setbacks?
So, there is...
What, your setback's eighteen feet, right?
There is an interesting point about your Groveland zoning. Um, your Groveland zoning says that if you have a lot that is created or in existence prior to zoning,
Yeah.
um, that has less than a hundred and fifty feet of street frontage, the sideline setback can be reduced, or is reduced, to ten feet.
Uh-huh.
And Groveland zoning also says that the rear yard setback matches essentially the side yard setback. So, there's no dimensional indication for a rear yard setback, it's just the same as the side. So, if the side goes to ten, the rear goes to ten. That was a conversation I had with Sam, in interpreting.
How much do you have there? It runs, it runs at an angle.
The different versions. This, this setback box is based on kind of the standard setbacks for the zone.
Yeah.
So, this is eighteen feet to the rear property corner.
So, you pick up another eight, is what you're telling me?
So, yeah, they could put an eight-foot deck here, it's twenty-two feet over here, so they could put a twelve-foot deck.
Can you run that one more time, where, how that, how that provision gets you to the rear setback of ten feet?
Single. Uh, I could get you the first part of it.
Okay.
Uh...
I mean, I've got table eight one, note four.
I don't know, just speak back and discuss with them dimensions and where they want it, so that we can have that in perspective.
Okay.
Okay, so, one clarification I wanna make is that, uh, eight point one, the table, is for your newly adopted zoning?
Yes.
Okay. So, my conversation that led me to speak what I just spoke was somewhat based on...
The old zoning?
The old zoning.
Okay.
However, um, if you do s- s- look down to note four underneath that,
Mm-hmm.
on a lot less than a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, and in existence at the time, this bylaws pass, no building shall be erected within ten feet of a side lot line.
Mm-hmm.
I believe if you chase down the definitions of rear yard, you will find that the rear yard is dependent upon the side yard.
I nearly took out the definition of yard, actually. Now, just setback. Did you have some clarity about where and how big the proposed deck might be?
So, it sounds like what they would like to do, to just do a deck all along the back, so it just look uniform.
Okay.
So, it'd just be along the back, if they, they would like to have the eight feet or more as possible, that it could be used as a sitting area.
Yeah.
I would point out that somewhere else in this document, it does clarify that entrances, um, can encroach into the setback area. So, they could, here I could put a, if you conceded that the rear setback could be ten feet, they could put an eight-foot deck in, and then have stairs off the back of that that actually encroached into the setback area. There's probably no way they could find it in the six pages I have printed out.
Okay. I'm signing for the benefit of the board, um, section eight point four.
Eight point four, where are you locking, what page is that?
Eight point four.
Big document, yeah, there are reasonable things. Um, nothing...
Pages aren't numbered here.
Nothing herein shall prevent the projection of steps, unrooted porches, cornices, windowsills, belt courses, and other ornamental features into any required setback. If the board considers a deck and others porch, I think that that makes...
I, I think it has limitations, I mean, you could have a deck for, you know, outdoor living space, but that's, I think, I think...
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be on the property line, like, yeah, you gotta...
I think the purpose of it is so you can have an egress, and if you need stairs down, then you need stairs down. I think that's the public policy behind it, but that's, that's my interpretation of it. Um, you know, take it to the extreme, could you have a fifty-foot deck and go all the way to the property line and use that? I, I, I don't think you could. Um, I, I think it's what's necessary and practicable, uh, uh, under the circumstances. So, if, if you have twelve feet on one side of the building and eight on the other, I mean, the other thing we've spoken about at other meetings is, you know, if the fire department's gotta get around there, they gotta get around there. Um, somebody could put a fence right on the property line, and you need a way to get, you know, get around the property. So, there's a reason for setbacks, um, not just to make the neighbors happy, but for public safety reasons, so...
Additionally, I think our question here is actually whether or not they need a variance for that deck, or whether it's included in the...
I think it depends on whether or not they wanna, um, en- en- encroach upon the setback. I think they have to follow the setback unless there's a, um, you know, if it's, uh, uh, for, for safety, it's an emergency reason for that, they still might need a variance for that, for that second, if it's for a egr- second egress.
What I'm just meaning you're saying is that if they go to the eight feet, then it would be allowed.
Yes.
If they go further than that, then they would need to come back for a variance.
On one corner. It goes at an angle there, so it's ve- it's variable throughout the property line from what I can see. So, on, on the fire extreme, on the right, from where I'm looking, um, as explained, you only have eight, eight feet for the deck. Um, on the other side, it could be as much as twelve. So I don't know if you'd wanna go over and then jog it out or something and then come over. I mean, that's, that's your call.
Well, then, just do the eight feet across and then do the stairs on the left side.
Yeah, well, you probably have to have two sets, one for each side, yeah.
Well, if the deck's not divided, it wouldn't, you know, break.
Right, but, anyway, we're not designing it.
I don't know.
About eight parking spaces for two units.
Well, I mean.
That seems a bit much.
I think the goal is the separation of the parking is what he's really.
No, and I get that, but but the I'm surprised by the six on the left.
Well, what I what I use that as an example was if you wanted to, well, if somebody wanted to eliminate these spaces, you could accommodate.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Four to six vehicles over here if you wanted to.
Yeah.
If your concern was adequate parking on the site, you could make it work to the left.
You are.
Perfectly, it would be splitting.
I don't think there's a I don't see much of a problem with the one on the right, because I think they're right, it blends right into the other parking lot, it's pretty pretty close if I recall, right?
Yes.
So, if he go.
It would just be basically out of space from the existing.
Right, exactly. And the drawing shows that he'd be twenty-two feet deep.
As long as you don't mind me using your parking lot.
So, I'm sorry, so on the sketch that he gave to Bob, that shows twenty-two feet deep.
Yes.
So, in my opinion, you could fit two cars there pretty easily in twenty-two feet.
Yeah.
No.
Tin- tandem?
Uh suburban is twenty-two feet long. A regular car is about sixteen to eighteen.
Sixteen usually.
But parking spaces are nine to eighteen.
Oh yeah, that's true.
Standard space usually like twenty-four feet, isn't it?
I'm using my little corolla, I think there are big people.
Yeah, well.
Big cars.
What standard, yeah.
The new standard, I think, is twenty-four.
Putting over here would probably would probably devolve into somebody parking on this property.
Thought it was, but um.
Plenty of places that are smaller.
And somebody parking.
Yeah, I mean if you got a key or something.
Yeah, parking area. Because the dri- the parking area would essentially be blended together. There'd be a nail out there that says, here's where the property comes.
Yeah. Yeah, um. Just to understand, is it your intent to put two separate driveways in?
I think that would be the preference.
Okay.
But again, I I don't really know the best way to tackle that through which or in what forum to.
Yeah. I mean, for us, our concern is that there are each unit, if it's more than one bedroom, has two spaces, um. Which it sounds like you're planning to provide. Um, any other comments?
Why wouldn't it be to the uh the maybe the building ins- building inspectors, uh wouldn't that be his jurisdiction to determine where the parking went or no? Would that be, oh, would that be a highway?
The what? It would be a site plan review if it was subject to site plan review, but I don't think it is.
Where the parking goes is not subject to that? Then he has discretion.
I don't think there's anything.
No matter what we do. Right?
I think so.
I think the letter of the law in Groveland actually says that everything is subject to site plan review, but I think it's a generally understood thing that presidential uses aren't typically subjected to that.
Yeah.
In my experience with Sam and other building inspectors in local towns is that they will ask for a site plan that shows at the parking, to your point, and he'll take a look at it and say, yeah, yeah.
Right, 'cause it's required as a as a, you know, it's prerequisite to per bedroom, as you stated previously, right?
A bylaw now actually only requires site plan review if there's a new building or structure being built, so. Um.
But there's, there is an existing parking there. This is an addition. It's a new parking.
It's not a structure.
It's there, but it's an alteration.
Right. So, we have to determine whether the alteration is not more detrimental.
I think the alteration could be more detrimental to put it on the corner, I mean, if you're stacking the cars there or they're backing out onto the busy road there, so my preference would be to put it on the left. You know?
How does that sound to you guys?
The ceramic guys in there were, they weren't before.
Yeah.
Can I see that drawing one more time?
Oh yeah, that's.
Thank you.
I mean. My concern is mostly overt between interference with the the neighboring driveway, um. At the same time, they're using their property for the same use as is being requested here, um. We've heard evidence about it being a dangerous curve and a blind curve, but we've also heard evidence that there's a stop controlled intersection nearby, so traffic should be slow.
Um, I don't know how that weighs with the rest of the board, but. A lot of time.
The twenty-two feet there, does that include the sidewalk in front?
Uh, I guess that'd be the question, if it includes the sidewalk on the property or the sidewalk off the property?
It doesn't.
Yeah.
It doesn't appear, right, 'cause this is the sidewalk and then it goes twenty-two feet back from the sidewalk line.
From the side, yeah.
I, my preference. I I don't have a problem with this, but as far as like backing out, I don't know that it's too much, because there is a big stop sign right here, and when you come around that corner or you come around this corner, it's pretty slow, slow moving. And when you're sitting here, you can kinda see what's going on over here, so if you see something coming out, it doesn't, that just won't.
And, you know, most residential uses, people back out of their driveways, it's not really a surprise, but.
So, 'cause I was just reading the parking, so these are gonna be three bedrooms apiece, right?
No, it's a one bedroom and a two bedroom?
We hadn't nailed down a floor plan, per se.
Well, you only have, it's fairly small, it's only one story, so it's pretty small to begin with, so I don't think.
Because the septic is for six bedrooms, so I.
The septic system was approved for six bedrooms.
Right.
I believe my application said two three bedroom units. I believe your parking regulations require a total of four spaces.
Correct, that's where I'm getting at, okay. Because I assumed it was two three bedrooms, 'cause he had a six bedroom septic.
What is the square footage? Yeah, well, I, but, uh what is the square footage of the footprint, because I don't think you could fit.
So, that's the idea.
He said it's by two thousand square feet.
Uh, it's well, less than that, but if you split that in two.
You got a thousand square feet, there's gonna be some small bedrooms.
Yeah, you're gonna run into the minimum bedroom size.
Right.
Right.
Long before you fit three bedrooms in each.
But it's by one bedroom or two in one.
Yeah.
Right, that's why I asked the question, 'cause I wanted to figure out how many, how many parking spaces does he have to have?
Yeah.
So, based on that.
But does that include, I mean, if he has three over here and one over there, I think he's covered on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so I was looking at this and, you know, could you do four here? And that way, eliminate your concern about this one, you know what I mean? If you did this one, but his curb cut is only thirty feet.
So, yeah, you only got a thirty foot wide curb cut.
Um. Somewhere there's regulations that says the maximum curb cut width is thirty feet.
But it could be deeper and they could pull in.
So, I mean, there could theoretically be two separate thirty foot curb cuts, separated by a little section.
But you can't go too far.
No.
I would also want to minimize the pavement too.
Right, yeah.
Pave the whole yard for parking.
Yeah, I I personally don't have a issue with the.
Yeah, you get thirty to thirty feet. Yeah, I think my major concern with that corner is not, you know, causing issues with the sidewalk and block, you know, the abutting driveway effectively. So, if they're park, you know, if he's parking, you know, has two people trying to squeeze into that space, then.
Like, why couldn't that just be subject to uh parking regulations and.
It would be.
Or approve it for six parking spaces or something like that? You know? Why do we have to find the placement of the parking?
Well, you were saying that if you thought that the location of it made it more detrimental, that.
It may not be safe, I can't tell from sitting here, I can't, you know, I mean, I I, 'cause he- here's the thing, with all due respect, I mean, the the plan doesn't show the driveway on it. Okay, so I'm trying to visualize something and to me it's illusory, okay? So, um, what is doesn't exist on the plan. So, uh whatever we approve or disapprove, I wanna make sure that it's what we agreed on, you know, and it's for everybody's uh uh interest that that occurs and that it doesn't change colors or become a chameleon of sort. So, um, it could be more, I don't have a problem with the building, um, the the uh the footprint's not gonna change, the uh the structural um uh size of the building isn't gonna change.
Sorry, can I just kind of keep it?
So, so, so far, I'm good, I'm on the one yard line, okay? But um it looks like you're putting the parking right up to the um the property line there and and but again, I don't see it drawn on the plan. So, what I see is, and again, if there's an alternative location on the site that would be um less detrimental, um then why not go to, why not go to the alternative, that's just my suggestion. And i- i- is it your position, uh, Madam Chair, that uh he has a right to put it there? If he has a right to put it there, then it's a more point, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not confident he does, and I don't.
On what basis?
It creates a safety problem, but again, is that the highway department, I mean, I defer to, if if, could it be worded subject to approval with the Road Commissioner and the Building Inspector, uh subject to uh, you know, all applicable parking regulations? I think that's the, I wanna defer, I'm um.
Okay.
I wanna defer, okay? I I.
Um, do you wanna make a motion?
Do I wanna make a motion? Well, but we're having discussions about uh the uh totality of it and whether or not it's less detrimental or whether or not it's substantially more detrimental, I don't think it's more substantially more detriment detrimental in the bright uh uh to change it to two uh two apartments, so. I'll make a motion that we approve his um application for a special permit um subject to our standard restrictions, which there's a list of them and usually the chair reads them, right? And um with the further um restriction that it's subject to uh um applicable parking regulations um within the town of Groveland. So, if they don't apply, then have at it.
Friendly amendment to your motion, which I need to also subject, um. Um. I withdraw my friendly amendment, nevermind. Um. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? I. I have one question for you, um, you mentioned that the property actually had been sold. It has it, it has been sold.
Yes. Yes.
Um, I just wanna include the new owner's name in the app, in the decision, so that it's clear under chain of title.
Should we grab this paper for you to copy off of?
Okay, thank you.
This is the new owners.
Oh, thank you. Um, can I keep this or can you get it back?
Um.
I can, I'll write it down. I'm gonna need your pen, I think someone doesn't write well. Okay. And um I'd ask you if you could um email us, do you have a copy of this plan?
This plan here?
Yes, please.
Yes, I can give you a physical copy of it.
That would be perfect.
Okay. This plan is actually what's recorded at the registry deeds.
Okay, if you, I'd I'd like a copy just for our record.
Sure.
Got it back now. Thank you. Um, and I realize I forgot to tell Mr. Porter how the special permit process works, um, but so we'll we'll re- write up a decision within fourteen days and it'll get filed with the town clerk, you'll receive a copy in the mail as well. Um, and then it has to sit with the town clerk for twenty days, uh for, to wait for appeals to come in, after twenty days, you can um come get the original from the town clerk to record with the registry of deeds and bring back a recorded copy for the town clerk and Sam will need one as well in order to pull any permits.
Okay.
If you have any questions, if I don't.
Um, another question would be, you prepare a decision and then mail it?
Yep.
Um. For convenience, if you want to mail it to you guys.
I last year included it on there.
I want to, uh, one, two? At uh Four Milton or we.
Four Milton Street.
Yeah. I had to name it, did I? Yes. Good.
We'll send it to the register.
Thank you.
Just so we know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for a two minute recess.
We're just gonna take a quick break, um, just a little restroom break, um, but please come up and and start sending up, um.
Anybody want a second that?
I don't think we need to.
Second.
I'm good, but you're calling. We're taking a break, Charlie.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, we're back in order with June twenty, it is June twenty-first, twenty seventeen, um. And we're going to hear uh two applications made by the same applicant, their application two thousand seventeen dash four, made by Fadi Isa.
Go ahead.
For the premises located at nine twenty-nine to nine thirty-one Salem Street, Platte Forty-nine, Lot Four, for a variance in order to redevelop and improve the site by demolishing existing buildings and constructing an eight thousand square foot building to include a convenience store, auto body, vehicle repair shop, and fueling station. According to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including section three hundred, uh as well as application twenty seventeen dash five. They were the same applicant for the same premises, for the same purposes, uh looking for a special permit to operate the convenience store, auto body, and vehicle repair shop, and fueling station. Uh, under all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including section nine hundred. Welcome, and again, thank you for your patience, um, with our hearing, all the other applications first, um, could you tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure, uh, my name is Hal Schuber, I'm a consulting engineer with offices in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. Uh, I'm here representing the applicant, Mr. Isa, on this application. As you stated, this is, we have two applications in front of you tonight, it's just, we have a special permit for the uses on the premises and also we have uh variances on the dimensional setbacks. Uh, the p- the property is located at nine twenty-nine, nine thirty-one Salem Street, and it comprises approximately at least uh three point seven acres, uh, you know, bound to the north by Salem Street, to the uh east and south by wetlands, and to the east by existing businesses. Small portion of the property is in uh uh Georgetown, approximately zero point three acres, but just to let you know, there's there's an easement that goes right through the property and the wetlands right through the property. We're only dealing with basically almost one point three acres of what was previously developed or disturbed on the property. Currently, there's an eighteen hundred square foot building, um, uh, it's Eddie's garage, I'm assuming that you are familiar with the property. And there's also a two family dwelling on the property, there's some pavement, not really defined in the front, and mostly it's all gravel and and disturbed, there's hardly any landscape. No stormwater management or uh no stormwater collection system or treatment of any of any shape. Uh, the property is located in industrial zone. So, with the proposal, the applicant would like to demolish the existing buildings. Uh, construct an eight uh eight thousand square foot uh building to be used for a convenience store and have five um repair bays and two auto uh two auto body uh bays, the the one to the left of the south. Also, including in the improvements will be the constr- construction of of a fueling pad with four, four fuel pumps, so it'll be the total of eight fueling positions. And an overhead canopy, two above ground fueling tanks, and associated parking, landscape drainage, and lighting. Uh, the uh the drainage, I have the drainage system here, as I mentioned before, currently there's, there are no uh drainage structures on site, the runoff simply uh sheet flows in the easterly direction and just uh discharges to the wetlands uh adjacent to the site. Uh, with the proposed improvement, all the runoff will be collect, from the site, would be collected by closed drainage system and will be controlled by the the grading and the curving around the site to a uh uh an onsite infiltration system and to a series of of oil water separators that would treat any any runoff from the site in compliance with the E P requirements. Uh, before it's discharged to an onsite infiltration system for uh to promote groundwater recharge. Uh, as Mr. Freya indicated too, this process has been going on for almost a year and a half. Uh, we've been to the planning board, I would say at least four or five different public hearings where they engaged the town PR engineer from G C A and we went through intensive review back and forth until we satisfied all the concerns and comments. So, we do have a site plan review from the planning board, we also have the order of conditions from the uh uh Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission really looked at this as an improvement to the site, because with this, with the improvements, we are going to restore approximately nine thousand square feet of buffer between the parking and the wetlands, and uh also, as I mentioned, the the big improvement is the runoff and the collection of the runoff on on the site. And not to mention that the two uh auto repair bays will be up to code as far as border valve, uh plumbing and and building codes. Right now, really, there's no control of what's going on yet, I don't need to tell you what the site looks like still. Uh, I do have a floor layout, if you like to see it, and the the basically what we show here, we show the uh the floor layout, the building that we submitted to you with the application, and you know, s- the 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 convenience store will be on the left side of the building, this is the, this is the site facing Route ninety-seven. It's just, these, I mean, it's a small convenience store, I wouldn't say it's a extremely large convenience store, but it has everything that you find in a convenience store as far as um uh drinks, juices, or uh milk, it has a walk-in cooler and a walk-in, and and a freezer, as this is the the cash register here and some gondolas for to stack some uh items. Also, there's a big waiting area that Mr. Isa would like to provide, because he's in the in the business of of repair, I believe, the reason he's moving from his current location to this location, because he needs a larger space. Uh, there's five bays for car repairs, the first bay will be used for inspection and the last two bays will be used for the uh for the auto body repair. Uh, I do have the elevations of the building, the building is is attractive design, what we refer to as Cape Cod design, so you can see it's not a just, it's not a flat metal uh roof or a rubber roof or with the metal building, it's it's kind of has the look of of what you see probably down Cape Cod or what we refer to as Cape Cod design, it's pretty attractive. And also, I have a rendering of the site too, that might help just to get a feel of what the site would look like after it's developed, and this is, this is the three D rendering of the site. Um, as I mentioned, that we went through the site plan review, so drainage, lighting, landscape, uh all the site items, they conform to the town bylaws. We are here for two items, the special permit for the uses, and as I mentioned, this is, we have an existing nonconforming use on site, which is the auto body and the repair. Uh, and and the existing buildings are not conforming as far as the setbacks, they've, the setback, the front setbacks are fifty feet, uh the sides are twenty-five, we do comply with the side. It's to really comply with the front will be impossible, we all know the shape of the lot, we know, we know what the constraints on the lot. The 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 wetlands in the back, we prohibit any any building to be placed and and get a viable business going with the fifty foot setbacks, so it's an existing nonconforming use, existing nonconforming structure that we're asking for both, you know, the uh special permit and the variances.
Uh, so, am I understanding that I've, since I've read this application, I drive by it every day, so I keep looking at it as I go by, I noticed there's a quite a grade change, like, it, you know, the that house is way up on a hill.
Right.
The area coming down to the road grade is.
Oh, not to the, we're we're cutting, we're matching the grade at the at the east right here, and then we're going five percent, and then we have retaining walls on in the back with guardrails, so. There's a series of of retaining walls along the south and the east side of the property that.
Um, just a question, uh, um, I have a question, will there be a car wash or no?
No, no car wash.
Um. Can you walk me through your traffic numbers a little bit that you provided?
Sure, uh, the basically, the traffic we do, it it trip generation, because this is a a a project that, you know, we scan compared to what was there, we just wanted to get a feeling of what kind of traffic are we getting, and if we look at the traffic number, we see like a hundred uh trip vehicle per during the peak hour, it means, you know, that you can have fifty cars coming in and out of the uh the site, but again, when we look at the traffic, I do this for, every night I have a public hearing somewhere in New England to to re- in regards to to traffic and and gas stations, we all know gas stations are not traffic destinations, so people are not driving from neighboring towns just to come, you know, it's mostly people that live here, they driving by, they, you know, there's a gas station, a repair shop, they stop by, so basically. We're not, we don't anticipate any increase in traffic on Route ninety-seven because of this project, yes, I mean, we anticipate more c- cars coming in and out of the site, absolutely, that's that's the the intention here.
Right.
But we do provide for that traffic circulation here, we do have proper signage, proper uh pavement markings, proper parking, and and to uh to accommodate all the uses that we're providing.
Okay. Um. Is the gas station going to be self-serve or is it or or combo?
Yeah, it would be self-serve, yes.
Self-serve.
I do have a couple of questions, but I wanna say first that I actually did file a um conflict of interest disclosure with the selectmen for this application, only because. only because I have patronized Mister Issa's establishment and I bought a a car from him.
Oh, okay.
So I filed it with the selectmen, I talked to state ethics commission, we're we're fine, but I just wanted to at least mention it here that I did file that.
Oh, okay.
But I don't feel like it would hinder my people, yeah.
Effective.
Sure. So, but I do have a couple of questions. So you did go to conservation and I know you went to planning. So what happened in planning, Jim? You guys did full.
Yeah, basically, um they picked uh G C A, he's one of our three engineers, okay?
Turn the microphone on.
We use G C A in this in this uh site plan review and um Peter Williams is one thorough engineer, doesn't miss anything. And I think we we did about fifty-two was the all-time record uh things that had to be corrected on plan and everything. Okay, so this thing is tight and uh so we don't have any problems going forward. It's more oriented to that than anything else. I mean, everything that he has within that building is what I thought it built. Um is is kinda what you do see, you know, there are probably more bays um because of the body shop and um probably one more bay you might see, you know, where the gas station would be in this sort of type situation. Like, you know, the pumps, same amount can find just about anywhere. Um because of the water around the property and everything, everything had to be taken care of, so nothing would spill or anything like that. Um, you know, we we worked diligently on this, but it still took almost a year and a half, same as a year and a half in the in the total planning process on this thing. And I think we probably made Tom Collins life a lot easier too at the same time. You know, 'cause they they came kinda like after us, they always do, like we told them, get in there as well. When we saw certain things and then aware what Peter was finding and we also gave him his period of work as well. So, you know, it's um, yeah, two boards are pretty diligent.
And so you reviewed landscaping, stormwater, um did lighting?
Lighting.
Lighting, sign.
Sign it, signage. Um, did you look at site circulation at all? Like uh traffic on site, how how it comes in and out in the curb cuts?
Well, it it's, yeah, it it meets what Peter had come up with and everything. It's pretty standard, but at the same time, you're a little bit tight in there and everything, but it's the flow is not gonna run in something else. That that was part of what we looked at, you know, so we'll be cars waiting to go into the base park outside as well. Um, it's in terms of traffic going by and what will be coming in and going out. When you do a traffic study on something that has eighteen thousand cars and trucks a day flowing by Route ninety seven, it it's a drop in a bucket, you know? If you get on a back road or something like that and build new wells, it's it's an impact. But in this case, it's a drop in the bucket.
Well, I think the main concern would be with the reduced setback, with the tru- the people waiting tend to back up on Salem Street, cause any delays there.
So how m- have you looked at how many cars can queue waiting for pumps?
Yes, in addition.
And other c- tangential with that, is it gonna be like a one-way in for certain pumps or is it, you know, with everybody with the different side of the car that the gas tank is on?
Different.
You know, it's just how that's gonna work.
Like rolling gas, that's crazy, 'cause people gotta like this.
Right.
Yeah.
I I think this is a little deceiving because this is a thirty scale plant, so it looks small.
Mm-hmm.
If I plotted this on a twenty or a ten scale, it looked like, to just to give you an idea of what the dimensions, this is. The reason, I mean, we have um we have twenty-five feet between the edge of the uh landscape and and the fueling pad, twenty-five feet. That's typical for a two-way traffic, I give all our.
And that's that's the edge?
Yeah, twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
That's my phone.
Right.
Yeah.
And the all the uh the the shortest, if you're looking at this here, you get almost eighty feet before you get to the this is the closest pump to the street, so you can easily get three cars if, this is assuming that all the pumps are occupied. You have four pumps, so that means eight fueling positions, you know? So I don't anticipate it's gonna be any backup on the street with with this layout.
And that those measurements are to the edge of the canopy, the edge of the the pavement, not necessarily to the pump itself?
Uh, no, to to, yes, you're correct, just to the to the fueling pad.
Yeah. So there's a little bit more. Um. And so what, can you tell me a little bit about the business, like um will people happen by and and say, oh, I need I need my brakes looked at and pop in? Or is it by appointment only, um how, I just curious how much
We don't get on parking.
Pe- people pop in and
Not so far, we don't get on parking.
Can I have you come and and state your name for the record, just?
State your name, okay.
Uh, my name is Floyd Issa.
Okay.
I've been in Groveland since two thousand and five, started the business uh at the gas station in the square.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we get kicked out by the government and we moved to the new location. Uh, it took uh took us almost a year to get the permit, but think that we get it done and uh we're expanding now, we have more business and we need a bigger location.
Are you keeping your other locations though?
No.
No, okay, so it's moving, okay.
Yeah. Groveland town, uh the electric department, obviously, we don't have a better uh relationship.
Okay.
'Cause they took over the location and uh you can't wait to see me out of there.
The the landlord?
Yes, the new member.
Okay.
It's the town.
So you per- purchased this lot and you wanna move your business there?
Yeah, I'm ready for the move. This this is the reason I purchased the property, so I have a I have place to move.
And Groveland, your current one is is it two or three bays? It's I know it's quite a bit smaller.
Behind the back, right of the building?
No, I have a three bays, uh three lifts actually, two bays, three lift and a state inspection. So I work on four cars at this at the same time.
Got a question.
Absolutely.
What's the uh purpose of the uh reduction in the setback? I mean, could you not make this work or was that just a matter of uh you wanted more space uh to make the building bigger? I mean, was there a hardship involved or why why the setback were done?
Yeah, we felt, I mean, this is what he he the move, the reason he's moving from the other place because he needed a bigger place for his business. But also, i- you can't s- s- you can't sustain a business with with the smaller building they with with the way he's he's operating right now. So he needed that, but uh the fifty feet, if we apply fifty feet uh setback uh
It wouldn't be viable?
To the convenience.
Because you can't both actually, you can't, we w- because we have a, if you look at the site here, you see this lash line. Uh, this is the hundred foot buffer for the wetlands. And according to zoning bylaws too, everything has to be buildings or pumps, so you're not allowed to have it within the hundred foot buffer of the wetland. So you couldn't push, we could have pushed it back if 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 we had that, but because of the site, because of the shape of the site and because of the the wetlands on the site, it's really hard to meet the setback. Because if you think about this, you have a three point four acres, but you can't really, you would only utilize one third of that s- site.
It's it's about five and a half acres, the property, you just need.
So due to the geography of the property, I mean, that
The shape of the lot.
The shape of the lot.
Shape of the lot and the presence of the, I mean, I know for for variances, you have to look at the stature, you know.
Well, you need a you need a reason.
So.
You so I'm asking you for the reasons.
Water and everything else.
Yes.
You know, if it's a pretzel shape or something, it's not configured properly, so.
Yeah, it is, it is the shape, it is the shape of the lot and the presence of the soil of the lot, because of the presence of the wetlands, yes.
Absolutely, there are other factors that are pushing it this way and it's not so it's going this way.
That's why I'm asking, 'cause I don't, you know, I'm I'm looking at a colored drawing there and from here, I don't, I can't see where the wetlands are, are they, is that the dotted li- is that the dotted line there?
Yeah, those are the flags, but this is
On the buffer, was the
Right, but this is the buffer here, this is the hun- the hundred foot buffer. So what we tried to do, we tried to put everything on
Which?
The blue.
What, blue, it's black and white, what are you talking about, the blue?
It's the one blue line on there.
Oh, oh, the pen, I gotcha.
The the way the uh body shop today does not have that spray wood, that we put in the uh spray wood in the location.
Okay.
There were, that that body shop wasn't not complying with what's already there.
And so that that keeps, forgive my not deep knowledge on auto body repair, but uh keeps um
Dust.
Dust and smell.
In in contained.
Smell is acquired from affixation.
Yeah.
Contained, yes.
It's contained within the building.
Right, right.
So there should be no smell or materials affecting pub ninety-seven next door.
Correct. Correct, or uh or uh uh hazardous material, we said, it's a, you know, stored in the
I care about the wetlands, but I also care about the people who eat their hamburgers myself.
Yeah.
Um, I had a question back here, oh, um, does the does the grade at all affect your ability to locate the building in any way? Like, how does, does, is the grade a factor in needing the variance of the setback?
Uh, it it's all a combination, yes, I mean, the grade and uh because because it slopes, it like you said, this house is right on 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 a hill and then you have like a big vault in the middle, so it was it was really challenging in terms of site to 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 come up with. We came up with different layouts and this seems to work the best in terms of being sensitive, like I said, you know, to to the environment and pushing everything back another fifteen, twenty feet away from the wetlands, closer to the road, so we can reclaim that buffer and which was a great uh that's how I was able to get this through uh, you know, uh conservation, otherwise, you know, if you're not improving the project, I would feel. You know, so and that's why we get also in in the bylaws, uh the bylaws prohibits the the paving within the hundred foot buffer. So we had to get a waiver for that because I explained to the board that it's your, it's for your benefit to pave that because if you don't pave it, you have no control of the runoff. If you have any leaks from cars, it it simply is gonna infiltrate into the soil and make its way to groundwater. So if you cap it, you regrade it to to a system where it's all captured, treated, then you have control. And they agreed that this is what we need to do, so we got a waiver on paving within a hundred foot buffer.
Yes, in terms of the setback, I
A lot more in there.
Yeah. I I can see the setback requirements is being an issue on the pumps, but on the building itself, uh given the size of the building, I think you can prob- you know, where's the requirement there to, couldn't you make the building slightly smaller, lose a couple bays and fit within the setback requirements?
Uh
So you're already
Well, like like I was trying to say
Think more than halfway there, aren't you?
Because we had to watch where we are with the water, and then to recite the stormwater, you know? What you're doing is you're pushing this lot into a situation more rectangle.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I get that, I'm just saying, you know, if the rectangle was shorter and you use less actual building space, you could fit within the setbacks.
Well, I think they wanna keep to what they know they now need, what I guess, yeah, definitely, turn it. I get, they they do actual repairs sometimes outside, but knowing that they're in like now. It's a simple thing to change an out battery, they do it outside.
Yeah, it's You're going from three and probably the existing two, more or less whatever's there, to twelve.
Well, he really has, what you got in there, how many lifts you got, three lifts?
Three.
Plus that one long bay is basically the
Oh, and the new bays, that what we have on?
No, I mean, in the existing one, the long long one is
And that state inspection.
State inspection, you know, which is cool, really, it's kinda like a double bay.
Right, if you take this, the state inspection out, that's not really a repair bay. So basically, you have four repair bays and these two changes
Yeah, I'm more thinking how many cars, not literally what's being done in that space, you know, how many cars that space, that lot is really gonna accommodate of
Right.
versus, you know, and and why, why you need the setback variance on the building itself if
Is it just
A smaller building would fit.
Is it just economic?
No, I mean, also, when you look at this building, you when you have the repair, you you need you need a waiting room, you know, you need, you look at all this in consensus, you need to have once the site over a certain size, you have two bathrooms, they have to be handicap accessible, you know, he, as I mentioned, the the convenience store is part of the gas station business, so they're all together, you can't just build so it's not a really huge convenience store, it's not a three, four thousand square foot convenience store, it's probably fifteen hundred square foot convenience store. So you add all the needs for the repairs and 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 the uh and the bays and and the waiting area and the bathrooms and and small office and another small bathroom for the employees and the garage, I mean, that's how we came up with the b- with the size of the building, you know, so.
It's it's what I'm trying to get back to, is the engineering that forced it in, you know, just
No, what I'm what I'm trying to get to is that the the size of the building on the lot, you know, you're basically dictating the size based on the economic need, not on the engineering. The building could be shorter for without impacting the engineering of the lot at all. That that front could be back another twenty, twenty-five feet.
To have the bays that he has, you're gonna have more cars inside now than you would screw around hard in a lot where it is right now.
So is the intent to not do work on cars outside?
All time, part or two, so you don't need to work all time.
Right, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it the if I'm understanding the parking situation correctly, you know, if you have your site plan, but the the parking kind of in front of the store and on the backside of where the the gas station is, is that intended to sort of be the the daily customer type parking?
R- yes, the drop off, yes.
And then the parking in back being your sort of longer term storage for cars you're working on over multiple days?
Correct. Correct. Correct, yeah.
But that those spaces towards the rear wouldn't be like actively working on cars, so, you know?
Used all the time. Right, no, there'll be no repairs on outdoor, on on outside, on the exterior, uh all work will be done inside, you do the uh
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, it doesn't really look like you have much space on site for the, like, a natural location to be doing work on cars.
The shop.
Like, it's all parking spaces, so I think that makes sense that they would all be in interior. Um. And the have you, ha- what kind of conversations have you had with um any of the neighbors in terms of the use?
Oh, I, we didn't, actually, we've been through at least twelve other hearings, I would say, and by law, you you know, you have to notify all the
Yeah.
We did both, actually, both towns.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't had anyone come, which is unusual.
No one's come.
Yeah, one of the neighbors actually told us that we were doing this, you know, but
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what what's happening is, I mean, we've lost a building that was a taxable.
Oh, right, right, oh.
Hang on.
We're gaining a building that now is a taxable, you know, it's like, so.
Yeah.
Yes, well, one one uh brother, I I guess showed up in support of the project and I can't recall the the chairman's name, Larry Killig.
The uh the location, right across the from us.
Larry Killig, yeah.
He was in front of the planning board in support of this, but I haven't, this, you know, people don't come unless they oppose, you know?
I don't.
Most of the time
See, no, mostly empty room here this evening, so.
No.
Right, and it's been like that since all the hearings that we held, at least four or five hearings with planning and four or five he- public hearings with with conservation, so.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have, do you receive an order of conditions from conservation already?
Yes, yeah.
Do you have a copy of that by any chance?
Yes, I do. Um. This is the site plan review, but I don't know if you should like this.
Yeah.
Um, we do have, yeah, this is this is the goal, uh this is the conservation, I can't even describe.
And can you tell us anything about what the relative setbacks of adjacent properties are from the road to the structures of
Um
You know?
Of ninety-seven is well back, I don't think there's anything else right on the road there.
I
Just over across the street there.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the pub is showing on this uh
Yeah, I don't think they were on any of your plans, I just didn't know if you happen to know.
I don't, I know the two buildings that are out there now, they non-conforming, the current buildings, yes, and
The current buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, I had originally, I understand what you're saying, prior to developing this, we we developed several layouts and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but back about year, a year and a half ago, we had some, when we had those informal meetings with planning board, we had somebody from zoning board, and I think at that time, the direction I had, and that's why you see the numbers, were saying, we already have an existing non-conforming structure, try to make it performing at least whatever, six inches or a foot or whatever it is, make it better than what's there now, and that was, you know.
Better.
We we s- we start off all the businesses with a big group meeting, which is basically every chairman of every board, and we meet now over there, like companies, and we'll have water, we'll have uh electric light, we'll have uh planning. We we had the former chairman, who's on there, uh, we can do that, and um the building inspector, and if we, it's kinda like a lead into the business property, we did the same with, we'll have an application coming probably in a few months, the building, you know, we did a site plan across the street. And it's just to give them an understanding of what they're gonna need to be doing with each and every one of the boards, so that, you know, it's a jumpstart in a sense, and we found that we don't have a lot of businesses that come in with brand new buildings and everything, but if we get one of these, that's what we're gonna do, we do the Chester, and we do the additions. So, you know, that's that's the thought for when you process one forward, that if they get to know what they're gonna need to do, who the players are on each board and everything else, it's kind of a positive thing for this construction.
And at that stage, I assume the plans looked, you know, different, if not substantially different, from what they are now? Was it, I mean, just if you remember what Tom's um input might have been?
He was quiet, which, you know, it it was because he was gonna hear it, and more from that standpoint than anything else.
Yeah.
And um, I I can tell you that there were there were issues right from the beginning, just because of the water.
Yeah.
And uh, we didn't want anything, where do you see to the north of the location? You won't see as much water in that area now, and along with time, right into the top. We we got a feeling the beavers took care of something somewhere else, and then it was a rainstorm.
Yeah.
But the reality is, in that area, there is water, but there's also runoff from the building and everything else that's recycling itself, you know, so.
Um, I have a couple other questions on different topics, unless you don't want us to.
What I ask, the 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 setback, is i- is the building moving closer to the street or the uh the uh non-conforming building that was there is uh? It's closer, the we we made it more conforming. You moved it further from the street by how much? Six inches, basically, we. Okay, I didn't know if you were using that as an example or if that was. No, no, that was, you know. You moved it away from the street six inches. We we, well, originally, we had it closer, so, because we were, we knew we were gonna get a variance, I mean, whether variance or But. But I, the impression I had or the the direction. I wanna know if it's more detrimental, are you moving more to the street or are you moving away from the street? It's not. No, it's away from the. Away from the. Okay, so it's better than before? It is better, yes, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you a hundred percent better, it is better, I can say. Marginally better.
It's not about the same.
Right, it's about the same, yes. It's the minimus.
Yeah.
No, I, it's not more non-conform, we we didn't increase the non-conformity, I guess this is what we're looking for.
According to this.
The garage was twenty-four and a half, and then the the house was thirty-three.
Well, that's our issue, right?
Yeah.
Although.
Uh, I just had a question about um the the sign and and uh the size of the sign, um.
Yeah, this this twenty-four square feet, I believe, really, that's what the bylaws call for. And I don't have the design of the sign, but if we don't, if it's a condition that we need to submit the 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 design prior to the building permit, I think we do that all the time, but as far as the location, it's ten feet away from the street line and the size is twenty-four square feet, maximum is twenty square, that's what the bylaws for a bylaw sign.
Right.
That's, I wanted to.
Thought you had it, thought you had the detail of it.
Yes, uh. Oh, no, you passed it, I think it's probably, yeah, uh, probably the first sheet.
What, what I thought.
All right, yeah, that says logo, so we don't have the logo yet, we don't know what kind of, what the name of the business is going to be, but.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Is it gonna be a branded gas that's gonna?
Indi- independent.
Um, sorry, I'm sorry. It looks like our bylaw, is it, what zoning district is this? It's industrial?
Industrial.
That's true.
Yeah, we ended up at twenty square feet, and or.
Oh, twenty?
Yeah.
Unless that was recently remo- uh.
The the bylaw, yeah, was adopted in late April, um.
Oh, okay, so.
I don't know, I think at one point, we had been at twenty-four, um.
Yeah.
We don't have a problem then, um.
We're getting, we're getting a conflict, I mean, then he's told the board, told they use the old one, and they'll get something back. So, did she tell you anything?
Yeah, no, it, well.
The.
I know, she didn't put anything right, that was a problem, so.
Typically, the new the new bylaw is in effect as of the date of its approval.
True, it's it's a gray area because you can change, you can change anything that you could go, you could say, well, wait a minute, you know, we gotta go back to what you changed it,
It is a gray area because if the if the Tony general doesn't like it.
But I think you have to make the public aware of the change in that, which we did in what we were talking about.
But any, any application that comes in after you first notice hearing would be subject to the new bylaw.
Right, just to say, I, we we submitted back and just, not to you, no, no, I understand.
Either, yeah, no, 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 I understand, either way, you can get a special permit for a larger sign, so if you want a twenty-four square foot sign,
Oh.
like, we can entertain that as part of the permit, so it's up to you.
I'd rather if we're going for a special permit, I'd rather go for a larger sign, to be honest, but
Okay.
Or not complicate things at this time and say, yeah, well, I can go back and make it twenty square feet, it's not gonna make much of a difference
It's up to you whether you wanna include it as part of the permit or not.
between twenty and twenty-four square feet, right? We'd rather stay with. Bigger's better. Yeah, well, you know, for business, I mean, twenty-four square feet is not really, I I I mean, I personally have done s- most of the, I think Springfield, one hundred twelve square feet on one side, you know, so somewhere in that range, ninety-six square feet. But, you know, you might have like the different vendors maybe on site too, like, uh, if you have a Dunkin' Donuts or something, you know, like, or Subway, and then you have the logo of the gas station, then you have the prices and the diesel and the regular, you know, how, so it can get out of control, whatever, but twenty-four or twenty, I I personally don't have any preference, I mean, here's the, we can, it could be a condition to revise the plans to to twenty,
Right, I mean.
which is fine, or.
Okay, I mean, if you if you wanna entertain twenty-four square feet, we we can entertain it, it's just, it was just part of the permit, it's up up to your, you.
That that's fine. I don't want it to complicate the the applica- yeah, the application of.
Uh-huh. Okay, um. Does anybody have more questions? That's what's going to us. Are there any conditions in the order of conditions that you wanted to say?
No, it seems pretty standard, I just, but I wanted to make sure that they had it, it was ready in that, you know, concept. Because my first thought, when I opened the application, honestly, was you wanna put gas tanks right next to the wetlands? That kinda bothered me, so I wanted to make sure that it had been thoroughly reviewed and contained, and there is a water containment system and all of that, but I just wanted to see it, verify it, make sure.
Mm-hmm.
They're above ground, yes, that's why, that's the reason, yeah.
Yes, I I know, but.
It's been approved by Conservation Commission? Yeah.
Yes, so, but that's what I needed to make sure, I.
Well, yeah, I guess, if that's true, I mean, it's not our jurisdiction, is it?
No, I.
But it was a concern.
Well, I think, I mean, if we vote to approve it, it it would be sub- it it would be subject to all their orders and conditions, so, I mean, it's it's I I wouldn't say if it if it. Right, right, you can reference all other conditions, other boards, whatever. Yeah, right, so. And there's a.
You have a discussion, guys?
I mean, we don't, we don't send you, you know, anything because you're jumping at that point. It has to wait until it comes through, but he has copies of it. That's that's how this thing works.
Even if I didn't, I wouldn't say it was con- it was approved by Conservation if it wasn't approved. You never know. I know.
Jim, what uh what about the Aqua for Protection, are they abutting that?
Well, it's, believe it or not, we 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 were amazed, it's still in zone two. Uh, I thought that that part of the world was headed to zone three at that point, which we were gonna mess up Georgetown, but we're not, it's it's actually in zone two, it has to go, I think, one more lot over before it goes into zone three. So, everything that was done around the former pond that's to the north of this uh location, um, the buffer that was brought back on that, okay, and it's actually, there's recycling of water going on. Uh, how many chambers are on these, around?
Oh, the.
Catching all the the stormwater.
Uh, it's in the detail, I get nineties, uh, eighty units, eighty units, but also beside the 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 walls are double walls for the the for the uh the tanks.
Tanks.
And also, as a requirement, you have to have a hundred percent containment of the largest, I don't know if you looked at the detail, so basically, the tanks sit in in the encased concrete vault, designed to accommodate the largest, hundred percent of the largest tank, which is twelve thousand uh gallons. On top of that, so there's valves that are always in a closed position, then with with pipes set at an elevation to accommodate thirteen thousand gallons. And then when it rains once in a while, you know, if if you have some water in there, you open them, you flush the uh the water from from the vault and you close it. So if, for some reason, the during, you know, uh, unloading of the gasoline or something happens, you know, it's all contained, you know, so. And this was its system, and also that parking lot, everything's collected through a system where it has a shut-off valve before the the discharge to the underground storage, uh, underground infiltration system, so you can shut it also. And also, it's going through a series of catch basins and main halls that has deep pumps and oil-water separators to another unit of the BMP unit. I mean, this is all in compliance with the EP, you know, we, I gave you a copy of the drainage report, I don't believe that, I don't expect you to probably understand the, unless you're, uh, the the technical part of it, but basically, it 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 complies with the EP and this was reviewed by the by DZA and that's um
Mm-hmm.
how we, we really feel, I wouldn't feel comfortable if we didn't provide all these safety measures, you know, you know, it's, we understand the site and uh, it it stuck in terms of the shape and the grades and the soil and all that, you know, but it it works, so.
And is there, is there an attendant always on duty when the gas station's open?
I think there has to be, by law.
Yeah.
Oh, you need to operate it, absolutely, yeah, yeah, and.
You know, with the merchants, yeah, yeah. And do you, have you gotten a fuel dispensing permit yet, or is that?
Oh, no, not yet, that's that goes through the state, through the fire marshal, the uh, oh, uh, oh, it's
Hey, or from the border select.
Oh, it's border select for the for the storage, no, that would would be next, yeah.
Um, and is there anything that needs to be done in Georgetown? Cause I know some of it's in there, did you have to go to Georgetown?
There is no, we notified of every, all the work that we're doing, but there's nothing, all the work that's going on i- is within Groveland and not, like I mentioned, not even, it's one-third of the of the property.
So, but you're not touching the Georgetown, because at all, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
No, no, it's not. Well, we notified all the bodies, of course, by law, because.
Right, mm-hmm.
A few of those businesses actually have one in Georgetown, so Harper does a lot of it, you can't use it, so.
Okay. Further questions? Is everybody satisfied? Um. I don't, I have, how how tall are, are your?
Your building?
Yeah.
Uh. I'd say, I should be on the plan.
Yes, oh, it's, it's at your standing table, twenty-five feet.
Twelve and fifteen, twenty-seven?
Twenty-five?
Uh, twenty-five.
Thirteen, I'm sorry, twenty-five, twelve, yeah.
Just wanna make sure we're.
Yeah, I'd say compliance, no.
In the limit, um. I can't think of anything else to ask you. Um, so, I'm not gonna close the hearing yet, cause I've bet more questions, but um
Yeah, I did.
I'll take a stab at it, I love that, um, the way I
That's right.
read the application, I saw a use for a convenience store, a re- use for auto repair bay, auto body repair bay and fuel dispensing. And then there's office and storage upstairs, is that, is it planned to be used as just storage, or?
Yeah, this is just, it's not, it's not an op- it's not a separate entity, this is, that, we just wanna make sure, yeah, this is.
There's office for the, for the use, I think it's not separate, not separate, okay. Um, and then all of those um uses were allowed by special permit in the industrial district, um. I think that the application, um, that any adverse effects of the use don't add outweigh the beneficial impacts to the the town, that um we'll be taking a a fairly dilapidated building and a site that doesn't uh produce much in terms of um, you know, beneficial uh uh activity for residents or for our our tax base, um, and turning it into a productive and and really, I I I think your design is really quite nice. Um, so, I I don't see any uh adverse traffic impacts to the very busy Salem Street. I agree that I think uh most trips are gonna be pass-by trips, um, and that really, you're shifting the use from one location kind of down the street on Salem Street to to this new location, so it's really a shifting of of any of those impacts rather than a a generation of um significantly new impacts, wh- while the while the gas station portion is new, um, those trips tend to be pass-by trips, um. Given the area that it's in with a number of other um industrial and commercial uses, I don't think that this use of a negative impact on on those uh uses. Um, and I think that with the extensive review given by uh the planning board as well as the Conserv- Conservation Commission, that the impacts on the natural environment have been adequately mitigated um by the, by any conditions and requirements of those decisions. Um. With respect to the variance application, um, I think that the the while the size of the parcel is relatively large, given the wetlands, um, the grade and um uh, the requirements for on-site stormwater, um, regulations and and ma- maintaining all the stormwater on site, that um there there is uh a reason for granting uh the variance to allow twenty-five foot setback instead of a fifty foot setback. Um, in addition, the setback of the building, although it's a new location, is approximately the same as the existing building, um, which I think it helps uh bolster um the value of of. the existing building, um, which I think s- it helps uh bolster um the value of, of or a reason t- to allow uh that variance, um, and I see that the location of the fuel pumps um couldn't be pushed back further from, from the road. So that, that's how I view the application, if I'm well winded by. Um, am I able to hear any discussion on those points?
I actually agree with pretty much everything you said. I, as far as the use goes, again, it's shifting it from one location to the, you know, there will be some, uh, I like that it's gonna clean up that site where Eddie's is, and it will, I think it will help clean up the Groveland Auto site now, where it is now, you know, there's a lot of cars there, it's always, you know, so I, I think it benefits both, really. And I don't really have a problem with the twenty five foot setback, um, because the other building is there anyway, and has been for god knows how long. Um, so I don't see that really as an adverse, um. But my questions were mostly about more conservation type issues, but now that I've reviewed your conditions, I know that they've gone over it pretty thoroughly, as the planning board did too. Um, I feel like my concerns have been addressed and, so.
Yeah, I would say I have no issues with the, the permitting and the, the use and any of that, my biggest pause would be with the setbacks, but given the environment and everything else that's around there, I don't think that's really detrimental to stick with the, basically the existing setbacks, so. I don't think there's any issues there.
My turn.
Pressure.
There's no pressure on me ever. I think you've met the legal requirements uh under the uh statute, uh statutes and the bylaws, uh here locally, uh to be granted the uh variance. Um, it's a difficult property, may not be viable, um, without doing what you have to do. Um, the fact that the existing building is dilapidated, it's uh problematic. So, sometimes you have to use a shoehorn to get what you need in there to make it work, um, otherwise it doesn't, so I think you've met the legal uh burden of proof for the variance, and the uh special permit I think is an easier thing to decide, and it's, it's not substantially anything more than what was there, it's better in all ways, uh, from my, my perspective, so I think you've met your legal and factual uh burden here.
Um, so I, I think we'll, we'll need a motion, I, um, as far as conditions, the only thing I'm thinking is just putting it in, in writing that it w- that the work, the auto body work, the work, our work will be done inside the, the new building, um, since that is the basis for needing such a lo- a large structure, um. Any other thoughts on the conditions, if I may see, uh, obviously compliance with your other permits and all local state and federal laws, um.
Right.
Board of Health, Fire, and all those good things.
Yeah. Let me get my cheat sheet, oh, you know what we just.
The standard, the standard guidelines, we usually read that, but it's.
Yeah. Uh, one thing we did not discuss was hours of operation.
And that was worth it, yeah.
Um, and I think you had said five AM to eleven?
Five to eleven, uh, that's what I put, um, five in the morning for the revenue. But that's not the garage, with, right, I mean, by garage.
Yeah, it was eight to five, we're pumping there, yeah, every day, six days a week, Saturday till three.
Eight, eight to five is what you are Monday to Saturday?
Uh, Monday to Friday and Saturday eight to three. And Sunday we close the garage.
And you wanna keep those hours?
Everything will be closed on Sunday, but the convenience store.
Gas.
And the gas, the gas.
Okay, so the, the auto repair and auto body hours would be eight to five Monday through Friday, eight to three on Saturday?
Yes.
And the gas station, would those be the same hours, or earlier hours?
No, I think that's the five to eleven, that's what we have, right, five to eleven, yeah, so that would be the gas station with the convenience store.
Five to eleven. Just the gas station.
With the convenience.
And convenience store, five days, or seven days a week?
Yes.
I hope your notes look a lot more like mine, cause they're like all over the place.
I mean. He might, I mean, we, it depends on the business, on Sunday he might close at eight o'clock at night, but at least we have it still at eleven, so.
Right, but, but it, it, it doesn't mean you have to do it, but it just means that you can.
Right, exactly, that's, that's just, he's looking at, like, trying to explain that.
Yeah, I don't, you don't wanna work till eleven P M, so.
No, I mean.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't think there's anything past eight o'clock, though.
Yeah, and there's nothing that five AM really would impact up there, that's where it's just gonna be, there's no.
Right, eh, no coffee shop or anything, you know, so.
Right, yeah, there's a coffee shop around, but, so you can get your own coffee.
There's no, there's no residential space about, right around there at all. Further down, on the other side of the wetlands, further down, I think there's might be a little bit, but there's nothing.
And when you talked about lighting, did you just talk about, um, where it is, or will the light be on twenty four hours, or just while you're open, I guess?
Intensity. No, no, just during business hours.
Just during business hours.
Yes.
It's like, like, you guys were drawn up under the forms, remember, while I did. And so the.
Well, there'll probably be security lighting on twenty four hours.
So, yeah, so he doesn't have to hang it down, why?
Yeah, it's more like the larger side lighting.
Yeah.
They're all recess, all recess, so that'll be lighting, this is a brand new station, isn't it?
Yeah. Um, I, I, I have no problem with those hours, I don't know, if that leaves anybody any pause?
Sign, that's the only, because we show twenty four on the plans, so I'm not sure.
Um.
If you wanna approve as shown on the plans, uh, on.
I can do, we could do a, I can, I can be silent on it, um, which would let you go to Sam, our building inspector, um, under the new bylaw, you need a permit, a, like a building permit for a new sign anyway.
Open.
Um, and you could leave it up to him as to whether he's interpreting the new bylaw or the old bylaw, I don't know how soon you're planning on pulling a permit. Twenty, I mean, I said we could add it to your special permit, but frankly, it wasn't noticed as that, so I, I, I am a little hesitant to do that, um, if you prefer, I could leave it silent.
Oh, it wasn't noted, right, no, I. Leave it silent, just say that you have to comply with zoning bylaws, so when we go to the building permit, if he says, you know, I, I.
Exactly. I think that that might be the easiest plan for you.
No, we're fi- no, we're frightened, I mean, you know, if he says twenty, we'll change the plans, so we don't have to come back, or th- at that time we'll leave it up to him, if he wants to come back, then we'll have to file.
Oh, yeah, um, it's probably not the heaviest lift you've had to d- do in this project.
No.
Um.
All right, I know the, twenty four is probably, looks like about what most of the signs around there really are anyway, I know the.
It was a long discussion when we were redoing the bylaw, but um, it ended up at twenty.
Yeah.
Um, were there any other thoughts on the conditions, if anyone wanted to comment? Um, then I'll make a motion to approve um, application twenty seventeen dash five, which was designated the per- special permit request, um, approving the application request for use as a convenience store, five auto repair base, two auto body repair base, and um, gas, gasoline fueling s- station, sorry, it's getting late, um, with four pumps, with the overhead canopy as shown, um, with the condition that all auto repair and auto body work uh be done inside the building. And subject to all local, state, uh, and federal laws and bylaws, with the hours of for the gasoline and convenience use, five AM to eleven P M, seven days a week, for the auto body and a, auto repair, you know, it's Monday through Friday, eight to five, and Saturday eight to three, not permitted on Sundays, um. And that's it. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I also make a motion on application twenty seventeen dash four, uh, requesting a dimensional variance, um, to allow a setback of twenty five feet for both uh the proposed building and the proposed gasoline fueling station, um.
Can.
Um. Um, I think that's it.
So.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry it's late night, but I, I hope it's a good end to a long permitting process.
It is.
You're gonna give me instructions.
Yeah.
Pass it to drive two hours.
Um, I'm sure you know this, but, you know, we have a, uh, fourteen days to write up our decision, we'll file it with the town clerk, she'll notify you with a copy, and then there's a twenty day appeal period, um, has to be reported, and I think you know the deal.
I sit on the.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I know, I, I'm an attorney, I do this for a living too, if the board start telling me that, like, yeah, I know a lot about it.
Uh, that's what I thought. Yeah.
Um, great, thank you, and um, it looks like a great project, so.
Thank you. Thank you for looking, guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time, thank you so much.
Okay, good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you.
Select, select board.
Thanks for coming to us, Paul.
Yeah, very helpful.
Next, I believe.
Did you get in touch with, you know, the elements that is?
Julie, uh, I did, she said she would look into it, um, her back more, I don't know.
Yeah. I went through left over, long term, I mean, most of it's our engineering.
Yeah.
There were two items in there that pointed to this, it's only here. You know, savory wood, they think, was initially at forty B, was entitled to the project. It's twelve, it's a thing called Lindsay Way Savory Wood. And then there was that.
Before my time.
So, I know, and she, she might recall those things, I don't know, I don't buy a whole lot of her money.
Yeah, I just, uh, she had some family difficulties today, so, um, I'm sure she'll be looking into it, but, um.
Yeah. Right.
So we have a few more things to take care of, if I can find them, the right hand, yeah, there's those, I, I wanna keep talking about the rules of fact.
Yeah, right.
Um, so continuing our agenda, um, we had had a very brief discussion about rules and regs last month, um, and I apologize, I haven't really gotten much further on this, um, but I hoped that maybe you all had taken a look and maybe we got feedback. Um, section forty eight, or chapter forty eight, section twelve says we're supposed to adopt those regs. Um, we don't have any, I think that they will help us have streamlined meetings and e- educate the public on how our meetings run, um. It would allow us to do things like designate a vice chair, so that when one of us, me, has a, um, conflict of interest and after a queue is where, you know, it simply just don't need to get to a meeting, somebody can act and, and knows who that, you know, they know who they are.
Do I get interrupted or something?
Um, no.
That's why the record re- is gonna end up working, might.
Um, you know, just, so, so there's on a more formal basis, um. One thing that's still in this draft that Dan and I were just talking about is whether or not this town has adopted, Jim, do you know if they've ta- adopted the Mullen rule? If you, if you miss a meeting, that you can review minutes and, and still vote?
Yeah, well, we get told that by lawyers that represent some divisions all the time, the Mullen rule is you can miss one meeting after that.
No.
Right, but have, you have to adopt it. And the Mullen rule actually says you can't vote if you miss a meeting, but the statute gets around that.
You can miss one meet.
But, but you ha- the town has to adopt that to, do we, so the town has adopted that, do you know?
Yeah. No. I don't know, I mean, they put, what, what, we've been told by the attorneys that you're under that.
Okay.
Okay?
I've been meaning to check with Ann, who would be the one who actually keeps records of that, so.
Yeah. We got the same problem we got, need more numbers, I, I can't remember where to get them or how to get them, I used to say it, it's, it's getting bad.
Um.
Don't ask the sheer number of either.
Well, we can't, because we sit as your appeal board.
I sat on both boards for a while, I won't do that again.
So we're s- still trying to finish up here, so, um.
All right, see you later.
And if you guys had any thoughts or comments, or, I, I did start tweaking a bit, and I apologize, I didn't get it out to you, but, um, but things like, you know, I, I called Jim Ogden to ask him to bring a, a site plan, because when I was looking at that subject plan, I actually didn't see the site plan in it. It was like, I, I had no idea what we were looking at, like, trying to get applicants to, you know, bring a better application, will, I think will help us make decisions, better decisions easier, quicker. Um, none of this is really new. It's just quoting it in a place where people can find it easily, and would also dovetail with kind of revamping our application form. That hopefully maybe could become electronically submitted, to make it a little easier to distribute to us, um.
Somebody comes in and does it.
Didn't really love seeing all of our applications found at twenty dollars or P M, um, and, you know, like it doesn't need to be that hard, um.
Maybe, maybe that, a little off.
So. Does anybody have any thoughts? Concern, question, I don't think we're prepared to vote on this yet, cause.
No, I don't think we are, but, I mean, the continuance is, says, you know, requested by an applicant, I mean, what about if we need to continue it, I mean, you know?
There's changes that need to be made. Well, it's basically telling the applicant, either you can request a continuance, or we're gonna have to deny your application.
It, it's not. Oh, we might need to take something under kind of, you know, advisement and do some research, we may need the continuance, so I don't know that it's up, entirely up to the applicant. We need more information, we need more information.
Yeah, and I guess, if we can edit that where.
But it, it says an applicant may, uh, um, strike that, a, a continuance may be requested by an applicant. You know, what about the board?
The board in its discretion.
May, may also, may also.
Continue.
Yeah, I don't think the board should ever, should ever be obligated to make a decision on the spot if you need more information than you.
Yeah, and then, I mean, practice is that, no, you would just say we need more information, and it, if the applicant says, no, I can't provide that, no, I won't provide that to you, then you say, well, then we're not gonna be able to approve your application.
You should. Or, or, or. Well. Well, it may be that we need to, uh, uh, seek counsel from town council, so. And we've done that before, so we may need to table it, um, uh, pending, uh, advice, so. I think some, somewhere in there, it, it ought to be modified.
I say. For for a good cause?
Uh, just say the board, the, the board in its discretion may, um, continue hearings as, as, as deemed necessary, I mean, um, I don't think it would be arbitrary, I mean, certainly you wouldn't do it, well, we don't wanna decide it tonight, cause it's ten o'clock, we need to leave, you know, wouldn't be like that.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Are there any limits to, how many times we continue?
But, but, but actually, actually strike that, I mean, if, 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 if the hearing went till after midnight, no, I mean, it's, we're gonna quit at a certain hour, that's gonna be, you know, we're gonna, to, to be continued.
I mean, you can see allowing it, I can see there being a limit to say you can't recontinue.
All right, so, I think we should address that, cause I think it's, I, 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 I think it's,
That's not the case, I think, but yeah, that's.
That's a little too absolute for me, the way that's word. Not to be picky, but.
No, this is, um.
Um. Well, I mean, I don't wanna be restrictive. Guidelines are good for notice and information, but sometimes they can tie your hands behind your back, and that's, I wanna avoid. You know, too much. You know, too much red.
We make a vice chair.
Too much, too much red tape.
Um, does it bother you that the statute says that we're supposed to have them and we don't?
We can have them, but they can be streamlined.
I'd love to see your red line.
Okay, alright.
Are rules and regulations say that we have.
We have no rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
I suppose they're trying to.
I like the way you think there, I like the way you think that, and if you have any questions, refer back to one.
To understand.
Well, but I think it's helpful for new members coming on, as we know we desperately need, you know, so they kind of know the rules of the, rules of the road.
And it's not so much a cult of personality.
You know, a cult of personalities, we don't have that in town.
So.
No, you did a good job on this.
Um, this may look very similar to the town of Weddington.
You you plagiarized, but it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't copyrighted.
I think it is. It's public record.
It was in the public domain.
Do they put in any limits to the maximum meeting length?
Um.
When you say start, well, the regular meetings start at seven thirty, should there be?
An outing.
And they, no, necessarily.
Yeah, 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 oh, can I?
That's, isn't that more, more strict?
No more than four hours or no more.
Yeah, it's more restrictions, it's more restraint. Can I clarify now, eh eh was was I nominated and elected to be vice chairman for one case? Thank you, okay, so it's like a special appointment?
Well, that was, I I.
Thank you, thank you.
What I'm suggesting under here.
That was a special appointment, he was chairman, not vice.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that we have.
I like, I like to be a temporary worker here.
What these rules would suggest or would do would be to nominate a standing vice chair, so that we don't have to go through that regular mall every time.
Uh, it's quite the regular mall. That's fine, yeah, I think we should.
There's more than three emails involved, so.
We should have a plan B.
Yeah.
'Cause you could, it it could just be simply you get sick, I got the floor, I don't wanna come down there.
Or something might come up at work that I can't get around.
Things happen, life happens, so we oughta have a backup plan, it'd be nice if we.
I do need five members and some alternates, too.
It it'd be nice if we had some alternates, um.
Just about the quorum, I think, yeah.
I started as an alternate.
We're we're talking about the quorum.
So. I think my question is, is. Quorum is three members, but that's not a voting quorum, right?
Um, well, we we do only need three members to conduct board business, so things like approving bills, approving minutes, um.
Right, okay.
Is is only, we only need three members.
So do we need to say what we need for votes?
I think it says it under the sections about, under the specific sections. Uh, yeah, voting requirements, article five, section one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
To affect any variance or special permit, we need the concurring vote of four members, so. Just. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So, um, what I'll do, I'll I'll circulate the the red line that I did, I just made a couple tweaks, and I will, I will find out from Ann whether we have the Mullen rule, 'cause that's in here. And I think we actually, I'm not clear on, so thi- this also talks about the clerk and the clerk's duties, Julie being our clerk, I'm not entirely sure I have it correct, how she's actually appointed or how it works, so. I just don't know, 'cause I'm new. So, um, so I think we, I'll send it out, um, for you guys to look at and read during the next meeting, hopefully we can adopt a a set next meeting.
I'm, I don't know, we.
And if you have comments and wanna make changes, at that point, that's fine too, but. It's trouble, we only need one semester. Further discussion on the rules and regs.
Oh.
Moving on to invoices, um. Uh. So we've got two invoices paid to pay back to Julie House, one for four hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents, which is for um preparing. Uh, applications for hearing and other. Efforts to facilitate our board, and one for seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents, which is a reimbursement for the cost of mailing the applications to the board members this month.
Came in a big box, I didn't know what it was.
I didn't believe it.
Thought it was like a present or something, you know?
And that's why, like, I am saddest person ever.
You know, then I opened it up, and I'm like, you gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, um. It may be a discussion for the future, but, you know, I I'm hoping that we can maybe move to something more electronic, or kind of streamline that a little bit, it seems a little silly to to have to mail that much material to each of us. And we live in a fairly small town.
Yeah.
We could get an email, come pick it up.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying, 'cause we're tight on budget, and I think it's important to keep the fee structure lower, I I thought six fifty was excessive. We tried a lower number, we're up to four hundred, I don't want it to, I don't want it to creep back up to six fifty, you know?
But this this month with with that mailing bill, I mean, that's the, that's a bigger debt than I think we typically see.
We didn't foresee it, I didn't see that coming.
Yeah, I didn't see four, five applications coming.
You know.
Right after they changed the bylaw.
But, you know, I mean, not for nothing, we had four tonight, so that's, you know, actually, one had two, right, that was five, one was variance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a um, five times four, right?
Yeah.
That was a two thousand dollar evening. Profitable.
Yeah, it's only ten minutes, four minutes, ten. Um, so we also have minutes to approve, um, I don't know if Julie sent out the revised version, I I edited a little bit.
Yes, I actually did, maybe. Um, do you wanna take a look, did you guys read them already?
The revised ones.
Yeah.
I wasn't here, so, I.
No, sorry, you were. Oh, okay, alright. I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May third, two thousand seventeen.
Seconded, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Stained. Statute.
So, you moved, yeah, you moved. I seconded.
Yeah, I'm reading that right.
Yeah, okay, just trying to remember my thing.
Um, invoices, we gotta take a vote on the invoices.
Yep. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve, um, the invoices. Um, to pay back Julie House in the amounts of four hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents and seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's seventy-five bucks, I would have delivered it personally.
Right?
Taking fifteen minutes to drive around town, that's about it.
Then. Um, so last meeting, we had discussed the schedule for summer meetings, today, um, we picked July nineteenth, um, for our July meeting, Dan, are you available July nineteenth? I hope so, 'cause you're chairing Elizabeth Rose's application.
Same here.
Are you available July nineteenth?
I don't know, I don't know how my calendar would be, I think so, I thought we were gonna meet the first uh Wednesday of August, but it's actually, uh, it's better that we don't, 'cause I don't wanna pick everyone.
Great, I do too, so.
But of July or August, June?
August, first week in August, I like the fail.
Yeah.
What are we doing in August?
So, I don't, we.
I thought we were doing August second. No?
Did we, I don't know, I I couldn't remember, and Julie and.
So we're gonna, we're gonna skip that Wednesday.
I'm not sure, we need July nineteenth and August second.
It's two weeks apart.
No, 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 uh, what'd you say, July nineteenth or August?
I thought we were gonna move, basically, we you normally meet the, we normally would meet on the fifth of July.
Right.
So we decided that a lot of people take that week off, so we were gonna meet on the nineteenth to cover the July applications.
Mm-hmm.
So then, what are we gonna do in August, I had this as meeting on August second.
Did we, I can't remember if I checked it or not, which I just asked Julie, and those were the only two days.
I'm honest. I wanna skip that week. But you did fine without me.
Well, we got two people that wanna skip August.
Well, you can't, because you have to. We continued Elizabeth Rose, oh, that was July, so you're gonna do July, okay.
Yeah.
I'll be here for July. If I'm able.
I don't really wanna come that week either, but, um.
Why don't we take the summer off?
I don't. I think it just depends on what we have for April. Yeah, I think it's kind of hard, if we don't get anything, that's fine, can we do the ninth?
Well, I think we're supposed to, the first or the third.
Oh, we're not. 'Cause there's other meetings.
Right. We should do the first Wednesday or the third Wednesday.
Well, I mean, we can always schedule the second, and if it's only two weeks after the next one, so if it's not required, then.
Oh, that's a good point, 'cause if we meet on July nineteenth, all the applications for August have to be in by July tenth, so we'll know whether we have them or what we have.
And whether we have to continue, I mean, but.
Right. And then we can take it down.
Yeah, and then we'll be back on a regular schedule, um.
Yeah, we'll know what's, we'll know what's in the pipeline, 'cause of, 'cause of the overlap.
Right, no, because September is Labor Day week, but most people are back in school and stuff, so.
Yeah, they start school before Labor Day in this town, you know?
This is the sixth, so Labor Day is the fourth.
Okay.
It's not, it's not right, but.
August second.
It's not like it's on Labor Day.
Anybody wanna talk about anything else?
The only thing, getting a digital copy of the official bylaws.
If you want.
Cause there's not one online right now, there's only the January old one. I don't know who's in charge of getting that on the website, but it's not there.
Okay.
There's the proposed one, but not the official file version.
Yeah, um. Travel, you know. Um.
Is that the Mace, the Seastep, who who does the website stuff, Dan, do you know?
Yeah, I don't know if even it makes sense before it's, you know.
Julie.
H T approved or whatever, but I I need the copy myself.
But see. Yeah, I I'm using the copy I got at town meeting, so, um.
I don't feel like copying myself, I guess I'd never need it, but.
Yeah, I think you should have one, I think you should, um.
Yeah.
Technic, I mean, the bylaw is in effect as of the date it's approved, so.
Yeah.
The only way that would change is if the attorney general disapproves of our entire bylaw for some reason, which is highly unlikely unless there's a major procedural error.
Yeah.
Um, so, it is my opinion, we should be, I think all the boards in town should be applying the new bylaws to town.
Yeah, and if that's what the, everybody's gonna be expecting to live by, then they should probably have that one.
Yes, I agree, that should be available for the.
I don't know what the process is, it's up to you with the website and what that takes, but.
Yeah, I think it's fairly simple.
It's a date enacted, isn't it?
Which is town meeting, yeah.
That's the legislature, right there. B A G.'s just the regulatory interpretative body, they're not the legislature.
No, but if they, you know, if we had done something that was patently illegal, they would disapprove that.
Well, but. Yeah.
They can cry foul, you know, but, you know, it's rebuttable, always. You know, for instance, you know, Maury Hilli, I don't like her interpretation of the Second Amendment, so, you know, I'm not so sure I agree with her on the bylaws either, you know what I'm saying? You know?
I actually don't, but, um.
Wasn't there recent court cases that say that.
You know what I'm saying?
Locality laws really don't have any constitutional bearing at all, anyway? It's all up to the states and the federal, that town laws really have no legal standing anyway.
I think that's. Beyond the scope of.
We have no standing, we're just puppets.
Basically.
Ah, that's, oh, you, you're just deprostomy.
I think that's what the.
Um.
Cause in the constitution, there's no reference to town laws.
I make a motion to adjourn at ten twenty-three.
Wow, I was cynical before.
I second Julie's motion to adjourn at ten twenty-three.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. It's late, oh my god, I can't believe I said that. All in favor?
Alright.
I'm so sorry. Thank you, Charlie, what's that?